Okay, we are recording.
Okay, great. Thank you. This meeting of the Waco Independent School District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order and a forum is present. I also want to welcome everyone who is watching this meeting on WISD-TV, April Channel 17, or online at wacoisd.org/live. On March 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request from the state's attorney general to temporarily suspend certain open meetings laws in order to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to COVID-19. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. One, members of the public may watch this meeting live on WISD-TV, Channel 17 on Grande and Spectrum, and online at wacoisd.org/live. Notice that this meeting was posted online for at least 72 hours. To comment on an agenda item, members of the public were asked in the notice to submit their comments in writing to Mr. Woodcher by email last night, May 27. Although members of the board are not gathered in the central physical location, we do have a forum at this meeting tonight by video conference. We're meeting by the use of Zoom video conferencing, which allows for two-way communication. There's no limit on the number of people who can stream the meeting live or watch it on cable Channel 17. All other meeting procedures will follow board-adopted procedures to the extent practicable. All items to be discussed or voted upon have been posted in accordance with state law. A video recording of this meeting is being made and will be posted on the district's website at a later date. And if you have any questions about these suspended laws, please contact the office of the attorney general by calling 888-672-6787 or by emailing toma@oag.texas.gov. Next on the agenda is public comments. Did we receive any email last night?
Madam President, we did not receive any public comments.
Okay, thank you. So, special recognitions. Again, is that you?
It is, yes, with the assistance of Laura Robertson, our Director of Communications, who is responsible for our awesome special recognition. She's going to share her screen in a moment. Okay. Excellent. So, for the past 10 years, David Smokey Smoke of ESPN Central Texas has selected and recognized 10 male athletes and 10 female athletes in Central Texas. Honorees are selected for their achievements in the classroom, not just in the respective sports. In order to be considered, candidates must be involved in school clubs and organizations. These student athletes are nominated by their counselors, coaches, principals, and athletic directors. We're happy to announce Sofia Schwanki, who is also Waco High School's Class of 2020 valedictorian, who we'll see at the upcoming graduation ceremony soon. She was selected as one of Smokey's 2020 Academic All-Stars. Now, due to COVID-19, the annual banquet honoring these student athletes was not able to be held, but guest speaker Stephen McKay will be sending each All-Star a congratulatory message. So, congratulations to Sofia, who was pictured there. Moving on, the UIL Theatrical Design Contest allows students to create design concepts and designs for costumes, sets, hair and makeup, or marketing. For the 2020 competition, entries were intended to tie in to Pedro Calderón de la Barca's play, "Life is a Dream." Additionally, students had to create an element of sustainable design into the concept to promote green design practices in the theater. Five students from University High School's Theater Program submitted entries in this year's competition. And on March 14th, it was announced that Diego Larma's concept qualified for the state competition. Diego's concept places the world at the play in southern India in the years 322 through 185 BCE, when it was governed by the ancient Mauryan Empire. He centered his design on the Buddhist religion, from its deities to its artwork. The state contest was moved to a digital platform and judging system at the beginning of April, in which Diego scored a three outstanding for his concept. In a moment, you'll see Diego's "Life is a Dream" play. We want to congratulate him, as well as theater directors Katie Davis and Glenn Price from University High School. There he is. Congratulations, Diego. Over to Duke University Talent Identification Program, also known as Duke TIP. It's a nonprofit organization that has served over 3 million academically talented students in grades four through 12 since it was founded in 1980. Collaborating with educators and parents, TIP helps gifted students assess the extent of their academic abilities. The seventh-grade talent search helps gifted seventh graders develop those abilities and identify the extent of their academic talent through above-level testing via the ACT and SAT. In 2018-2019, we had seven Waco ISD students who were tested as part of the seventh-grade talent search, with one qualifying for state recognition, one for grant, three for E-studies, and two for summer studies. Now, in 2019-2020 school year, those numbers increased to 45 students being tested, with six qualifying for state recognition, one for grant recognition, 24 for E-studies, and 24 for summer studies. Now, congratulations, of course, to our state-recognized students, Yessenia Antonio from the Atlas Academy, Kayden Fillmore from Lake Air Montessori Magnet School. You see the two of them pictured in just a few moments. Following them is Kayden Fillmore and Kevin Gutierrez from Atlas Academy, John Palomino from Atlas Academy, Jasmine Velez from Lake Air Montessori, and David Henderson of Lake Air Montessori Magnet School as a state and grant recognition. And here are a few photos of the kids. Here we have Yessenia Antonio and Kayden Fillmore, and Kevin Gutierrez and John Palomino from Atlas, and Jasmine Velez and David Henderson from Lake Air Montessori. These are from some really awesome surprise celebrations that were held at the homes of the students, who were surprised by advanced academics, team members, and faculty. So, congratulations to them. Over to Texas History Day Competition. On February 14th, 110 Waco ISD students from across six campuses competed in the Heart of Texas Regional History Fair at Baylor University, with 20 students qualifying to compete at Texas History Day. Texas History Day is an affiliate of the National History Day Program, bringing more than 65,000 middle and high school participants together. Breaking Barriers in History was this year's theme, providing the framework for students to select the historical topic to research. The 40th Annual Texas History Day, originally scheduled for April 25th in Austin, was moved to a virtual format, with several Waco ISD students earning top awards and one student qualifying for National History Day. A virtual national competition will be held next month. So, congratulations to our Texas State competitors, Lydia Allen, Daisy Barco, Cara Camargo, Lily Kaufman, Bryce Cunningham, Andrew Eggers, Trinity Freeman, Daniel Garner, Alexis Hookum, Lilly Howell, Peyton Jones, Claire Prather, Siler Richardson, Isabella Riggs, Cohen Scott, Dylan Fox Siegel, Isaiah Taveras, Ethan Zimmerman, and August Zimmerman. And also, a big congratulations to our state competitor and National History Day qualifier, Oliver Houston from Atlas Academy, who earned a second-place individual performance in regional. So, a big congrats also to trustee Houston. We wish her son Oliver luck in next month's National History Day competition. We're also very appreciative of our History Fair staff advisors and sponsors from Caesar Chavez, Atlas Academy, and Tennyson. We have Kelly Barron, Leslie Cannon, Kimberly Keel, Shay Ruggles, George Snocus, and Sunny Wells. And here we have a wonderful group of students from Atlas, Lydia Allen, Lilly Howell, Claire Prather. On the bottom there, Lilly Kaufman from Waco High School, and Oliver in his really cool red sunglasses from Atlas Academy on the bottom right there. So, congratulations to all of our awesome Texas History Day competitors. The Texas Association of Future Educators, also known as CAPE, 26th Annual Teach Tomorrow Summit was held back in February at McAllen Convention Center. CAPE is a student organization that encourages students to explore careers in education. And the Teach Tomorrow Summit is a gathering of over 2,400 high school CAPE members and their teacher leaders from over 225 high schools across Texas to celebrate accomplishments and explore and exchange ideas. 12 University High School CAPE students participated in the state summit, with two students advancing to the national level. Kaylee Oates's lesson planning presentation and Genesis Santos's speech on Educator's Rising Moment advanced them to the Educator Rising National Conference. That conference, scheduled to be held in Washington, DC in June, unfortunately was canceled, but we are still very proud of our CAPE state competitors from University High School, Merka Cordero, Ariana Cordono, Erica Galvin, Hannah Herrera, Anali Ogden, Yvette Padron, Stefania Pizano, Mariah Sosa, Gabrielle Taylor, and Stephanie Vaquero. Also, congratulations to our CAPE state competitors and national qualifiers, as I mentioned before, Kaylee Oates and Genesis Santos. Thank you to our CAPE staff sponsors Karen Bayer, Denise Gunn, Alex Stuckey, and Denon Williams. And there's a few photos of our CAPE qualifiers from UHS. Congratulations to them again. Going over to choir and band, the UIL Music Region Eight Solo and Ensemble Contest was held February 22nd, with both Waco High School and University High School competing in band and choir. Solo and ensemble music events are scheduled in all UIL music regions, and students earning a Division I rating at the regional competition are eligible to advance to the Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest. Both Waco High School and University High School saw high numbers of state qualifiers in both band and choir, and for the first time in school history, University High's Mariachi Band, Mariachi Tryanos, advanced to the state competition. The Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest traditionally hosted in Austin over Memorial Day weekend. Unfortunately, because of COVID, was canceled. But again, we are still very proud of our UIL Choir and Solo Ensemble Qualifiers. Here from University High School, we have Maria Batista, Johan Escalante, Destiny Howard, Felicia Marquez, who is also a Texas Music Scholar Award, four consecutive-year state qualifiers, well, Tyler Mitchell, Nancy Kazada, Iljana Romero, and Robert Versua. There's a selection of some of our choir solo and ensemble qualifiers. We also have Faith Allen, Bill Barton, Catherine Burnham, Cameron Gilkerson, Angie Gonzalez, Roberto Guavera, Molly Hep, Harper Hoover, Caroline Lewis, Noah Maddox, Ace Mohammed, Haley Nafe, Ally Pendleton, Alicia Ramirez, Hiro Romero, Xander Severson, Isaac Sutton, Hannah White, Bethany Williams, and Jalen Young. Sorry, I've got Alexa that is, for some reason, thinking I said Alexa. Sorry about that. Let's see, UIL Music Solo and Ensemble High School Choir Directors. Thank you to Clinton Baranu, Brentley Bartlett, Carrie Forehand, and Lucy Murphy, the realities of doing board meetings in COVID. Let's move on to the University High School Mariachi Tryanos. Congratulations to Nubia Arias Alvarado, Jesus Barrigan, Angelita Basara, Carla Castro, Azrael Estupenin, Joseph Fort, Jose Garcia, Annette James Avianera, Giovanni Luna, Sierra Martinez, Louis Monroe, Judith Ortega, Carlos Perez, Noah Perez, Elsa Romero, Eurico Sercolia, Alejandro Vázquez Olken, Joni Vivanco Rodriguez, and Sierra Walker. Also, our UIL Band Solo Ensemble State Qualifiers from University High School, Javier Aguirreto, Ciara Blanton, Jesus Barrigan, Nubia Zapata, Chance Cruz Casares, Noah Flores, Jose Garcia, Jose Gómez, Archie Hatton V., Leila López, Jose López Flores, Sierra Martinez, Yaslin Mendoza, Jose Mercado, Ismael Romero, Melinda Salgado, Sierra Walker, and Jonathan Zapata. Over to our Band Solo Ensemble State Qualifiers from Waco High School, Hope Aguilar, Michael Aguilar, Daniel Alerkin, Jordan Burks, Giselle Campos, Lilly Kaufman, Timothy Danforth, Jordan Diaz, Cole Ellison, Mario Flores, Alexis Gallegos, Luis Garcia Jr., Bonnie Gibson, Orlando Gomez, Mark Gonzalez, Marziano Greer, Zario Greer, Javier Hernandez, Sabrina Hernandez, Astrid López, Ivan Lorenzo, Darius McLinn, Hector McCourt, Samantha Nava, Armando Olivás, Joel Picazo, Uriel Picazo, Jonathan Portillo, James Reed, Isabella Riggs, Emily Roberts, Hans Seller, Stephanie Torres, Solidad Velanzuela, Fernando Vallejo, Fatima Vázquez, Ashley Wilborn, Roger Wormley, Christopher Gount, Danielle Zuniga, and Jacob Zuniga. And also, a big thanks, there's a Lion Bride Band here. We've got a whole series of photos. A big thank you as well to our high school band directors, Archie Hatton IV from University High School, Justin Lindsay from UHS, Michelle Nelson, Tyler Sage, Scott Stiller from Waco High School, and Arthur Torres from University High School. And speaking of our instructors, the 2019-2020 Waco ISD Teacher of the Year process began this past October, when campuses nominated and selected a teacher that would represent them as their campus's outstanding teacher. 25 top educators were selected and honored in the Outstanding Teacher Ceremony held in December at Waco High School's Ridgefield Performing Arts Center. These educators were then invited to submit an application to be considered for Waco ISD's district-wide Teacher of the Year. The announcements for both the Elementary and Secondary District Teacher of the Year, as well as the Virginia DePuy First-Year Teachers of the Year, were made May 7th through a surprise set of visits to the respective campuses. The Waco ISD Principal of the Year was announced during a virtual principals and leadership meeting held in May. Each honored educator was presented with an award check from a community sponsor to celebrate their accomplishments. So, a big congratulations to our Waco ISD Outstanding Elementary Teacher of the Year, Jonathan Cambambia from Lake Air Montessori Magnet School. He received a $1,000 award sponsored by Roman the Realtor, Roman Novian, as well as our Waco ISD Outstanding Secondary Teacher of the Year, Julie Richardson from Waco High School. She received a $1,000 award sponsored by Richard Carr Motors. There's Jonathan, looking very happy. Congratulations to him, and he will represent us well in the elementary category. And there's Julie and Mr. Vidanya as well. Congratulations to her. She received a $1,000 award sponsored by Richard Carr Motors. Our Virginia DePuy First-Year Teacher of the Year, congratulations to Cassandra Benjamin from West Avenue Elementary School. Also, our Secondary First-Year Teacher of the Year, Charity Lee from University High School. Both our Elementary and Secondary First-Year Teachers of the Year received a $500 award sponsored by Virginia DePuy and DePuy Oxygen and Supply. Congratulations to them. There is Ms. Benjamin from West Avenue, along with Principal John Weeks, and Mrs. Virginia DePuy as well, and Dr. Kincanon. Congratulations to Mrs. Benjamin. And we also have Charity Lee there. Congratulations to her. And we also couldn't forget our Waco ISD Principal of the Year. Congratulations to Rebecca Meckel from Bells Hill Elementary School. She received a $1,000 award sponsored by Central National Bank. And there she is, along with Dr. Kincanon. Congratulations to her. And our last award this evening is our Rise Award. Waco ISD's theme for 2019-2020 school year is "Rise." The theme celebrates learning and growing, as well as overcoming challenges, and recognizes that no school district rises above itself. Instead, Waco ISD rises when families, employees, and the community join together to realize their shared hopes and dreams for the district's students and their future. Waco ISD is blessed to have scores of community partners who are deeply invested in the district's student center success, and that's why each month, we recognize a community partner who makes a difference with the Rise Award for outstanding community partners. In May, the district is recognizing Ascension Providence. The team from Ascension Providence has supported and partnered with our district in a variety of ways throughout the years. In addition to serving as a table or named grant sponsor of the HEB Celebrity Cook-Off, which benefits the Waco ISD Education Foundation, members of their leadership, including President Philip Patterson, most recently, served as a celebrity chef. Because of their continued support, a grant from the Education Foundation to the Greater Waco Advanced Healthcare Academy was named in their honor in 2019, and another to the Health Sciences Program at University High School in 2020. Now, most recently, staff from Ascension Providence has worked closely with Waco ISD leadership and shared lessons learned during the COVID-19 pandemic to help guide our district. They've assisted with developing protocols to keep employees safe as they plan to return to work, to keep graduates and their families safe during their graduation ceremonies. And they've donated a variety of necessary supplies, including signage, thermometers, and more. President Philip Patterson, Vice President Dr. Rich Haskett, Director of Providence Health Alliance Operations, Lesia Holt, Clinical Program Director Katrina George, and Project Analyst for AC, Robin Mitchell. They are accepting the award virtually. Here's a picture with them alongside Dr. Kincanon. We really appreciate all the work that Ascension Providence has done over the years, particularly in the last several months, in assisting us. And so, congratulations to them, and we appreciate them very much. And that will wrap up this evening's recognitions. Congratulations to all this month's honorees.
Wow, very nice. Thank you. A lot of great kids there.
A lot.
Dr. Kincanon, Superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening to everyone. Happy to see you all this evening. I have just a few things. First, I want to start by introducing our new Executive Director for Technology, Mr. Jerry Allen. And we'll put Jerry on the screen in just a couple of minutes. Jerry comes to us with a combined 28 years of experience in management and public education. Following two years as a classroom teacher, he transitioned to a district operational manager for Learning Care Group Incorporated for nearly 10 years. From there, Jerry went back to public education and has served Crowley ISD for the past 16 years as a classroom teacher, a campus administrator, and most recently, as the district's Executive Director for Technology Services since June of 2010. Jerry received a bachelor's degree in business administration and international business from San Houston State University, and a master's degree in educational leadership and policy studies from the University of Texas at Arlington. We're real excited about having Jerry on our team, and I would allow him the opportunity to say hello to the board. Josh can put him on.
Jerry, you're on. You can just go ahead and unmute.
Oh, thank you very much, Dr. Kincanon, members of the board. Thank you so much. I'm very excited to be a part of this team and really ready to get in and make an impact for the community and staff and students of Waco ISD.
Great. Thank you, Jerry. We're excited to have you.
Absolutely.
Okay, the next item I have is just a little more information or a repeat of some of the information about our graduation ceremonies. Of course, we're all very excited about those ceremonies, which are tomorrow morning and Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m. at the Waco ISD Stadium. University High School Ceremony will be held tomorrow, and Waco High School Ceremony will be held on Saturday. As a reminder, graduates and their families should arrive at their assigned gates and times. Each person will need a completed screening form and will have their temperature taken upon entry. Every attendee must wear a mask that covers their mouth and nose, and that includes myself and the board. Each senior received detailed information about graduation a few days ago, and that information can be found online at www.wacoisd.org/gradinfo. You'll also be able to find at that website blank copies of the screening form in both English and Spanish for anyone who needs those. And of course, we'll be passing them out to families as they arrive in the morning. I just want to take an opportunity this evening to thank our staff for their hard work to make tomorrow special. And I want to call out some people specifically. Kyle DeBeere and Tiffany Wetzel for their leadership and organization of the events. They did a tremendous amount of work. Principals Ricky Edison and James Stewart, and everyone from their leadership teams who've worked behind the scenes to make this happen. Our head nurse, Rhianen Settles, who's been absolutely phenomenal since this pandemic began. Chief Williams and his staff, and they're always responsive to our needs and always so positive and supportive. Israel Carrera and the facilities and custodial team who've been at every meeting, organizational meeting, ready to do their part. And then Josh Woodcher and the entire communications team, who've not only put our event together, but are also assisting Bosqueville and China Spring with their events. And then finally, I just want to thank all of our employees and community volunteers who will be assisting us. I believe in all. We will have approximately 100 workers at each of those events. Should be a wonderful and safe event for our graduates and their guests, and we're just excited. You all have any questions about graduation? Okay, moving along then. Waco ISD's response to COVID-19. I covered a lot of details regarding our response to COVID-19 last week, but I want to add a couple of additional items for you this evening. First, I wanted to let you know that we met with the Providence team this week, and they shared information about the practices and procedures that they've developed to keep their own employees safe in the midst of this pandemic. And there are a number of best practices that we can imply to ensure the safe return of our own staff. However, we need a little more time to implement some of those practices that we discussed at our meeting this week. And with graduation, we just need a little bit more time to be prepared to welcome back our employees. So, as a result, we pushed back the opening of the administration building one week to June 8. Everyone will still be working from home, of course, but we just need one more week. Providence will also be meeting with our athletic staff next week. We want to make sure that we're incorporating the lessons they've learned in our plans for summer strength and conditioning workouts. And so, they're going to walk those athletic facilities with us, and then we'll talk that out. And then finally, I wanted to inform you that I am putting together a task force to study options for providing instruction next year. And I'd like to be able to use some of the tools and strategies that we learned in our design thinking professional development sessions this year as a guide for our work. Today, I was able to visit with Dr. Julie Shell, our design thinking facilitator. She has been involved in the University of Texas's planning processes and has agreed to provide me with some technical assistance to ensure that we come up with the best ideas possible for our students and families. And so, during the month of June, I'll be pulling together a task force to have a conversation around what next school year might look like. And that's all I have this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board on any of those items.
Anybody have a question? I need to probably change my view, so I can see everybody.
Madam President, I don't have a question. I just want to express my appreciation to Dr. Kincanon and her staff and everyone that was involved to pull the graduation ceremonies together in such short order. And I'm very confident it's going to be a success for the families and the students, even the community at large. It's certainly a difficult time, but to enable this process to move forward in the manner in which you've defined it, I think is very beneficial. And certainly echo thank you to you, your staff, and all those that have been involved. And I think it's going to be a great recognition tomorrow and Saturday. So, looking forward to it.
Thank you very much. My staff was shooting me pictures today of things that were being set up, and I'm really proud of what they've been able to do.
Okay. Okay. Um, consent. Let's see, um, we've got items A through N on consent. Does anybody want something pulled for discussion? You have something? No? Did you say nay, or me?
Nay.
Nay.
I'm like a horse.
[laughing]
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh... Uh... I don't, I don't want anything pulled.
Okay.
It's fine.
Madam President, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Sex. You read my mind.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I don't see a hand, so I think we're good. May I just ask that, um, the reports on gifts being included in the packet, I noticed there wasn't any large gift, and normally, we have the, the Excel spreadsheet of gifts, and it wasn't in this packet, and I just thought about that right now.
Thanks for pointing that out. I'll, um, I'll watch for that.
Um, number seven, review and discuss the district's online registration process. Patrick Upmore, I see him. There he is. Okay.
Hello.
All yours.
Good evening, members of the board. Um, Dr. Kincanon's asked me to come in, uh, tonight and give you an overview of our online registration process, and so, I'm going to share my screen here in just a second, and, uh, and kind of walk you through some of the, uh, improvements that we've made based on feedback we've received, and then even take you in and kind of show you the online registration process, um, to show you how we have, uh, made the design more efficient for our parents and our students. Are y'all able to see the, the screen now?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. So, based on feedback received from parents, um, over the course of last year's registration, um, we've looked at new procedures to make registration more efficient, um, we've looked at ways to make it completely digital, and also to prevent any type of redundancy in the entry for parents. And also during this time with the closure for COVID-19, TEA guidance is pushing towards best practice of a full virtual enrollment process. So, it's really been a good opportunity to push forward with some of these, um, measures. Improvements we've made for this year, this is the first year that parents of students that are brand new to Waco ISD can actually go online, create their own account, and enroll, so we can collect all of the information for new students to Waco ISD, whether that be pre-K or incoming students from out of district. Parents and guardians now have the ability to copy contact information over to multiple students. So, if a parent is enrolling, their second or third child, there's no duplication of effort to enter the information. They're able to copy that existing information, and then if they're enrolling a new student with the district, a pre-K student or something like that, they can also copy that information to their new student, which prevents that, uh, re-entry. And also, it gives the parents one account to control access to the parent self-serve for all of the students that they have in their household. We've also updated the medical history information. Now, nurses will receive information from parents immediately upon completion of online registration. They can receive notifications, um, regarding specific medical conditions that Ms. Rhiannon Settles is helping me to identify, and so, our nurses will have much more accurate and up-to-date information in a quicker fashion. Two of the biggest pieces are the forms that we have that are in the online registration process. Now, the, the information is duplicated across all students for the forms that are based on household, so a parent does not have to fill out the same set of forms three times if they have three different students. And then, of course, we have allowed for the uploading of documentation requirements for the online registration process.
Mommy!
And so, now, uh, so now...
Mommy!
So, now, parents are able to upload, uh, driver's license photo ID, social security, birth certificate, uh, their proof of residency, and even immunization records, uh, in a secure online format inside the registration process. Any questions about some of the changes? And I want to, I'll take y'all in briefly and show you some of those. Okay. So, online registration, we softly opened, um, this past, uh, this week. We are sending out notifications to parents on the upcoming report cards, and we, working with Communications Department to send out, um, mass information on social media and as well as all calls. We are pushing for parents of returning students to Waco ISD to register or complete registration by June the 26th. This will help give us a more accurate enrollment count for the next, uh, school year. And, uh, the process itself won't actually close online. We plan to leave this open, um, again, to have the virtual enrollment environment open year-round, so parents don't have to make face-to-face contact. And we are also planning with campuses, uh, a week at the end of July for some face-to-face support for those parents that still need a little bit of support, um, with the registration The Waco ISD website has been uploaded with the help of the Communications Department, so we have updated all of the information on wacoist.org/enroll. Now, here, the parents can access all of the links to go into the registration portal, and it also has videos and information on how to complete the registration process. And then also, we have centralized support through, uh, uh, our office, uh, downtown. We have registration at wacoist.org. Uh, that disperses to my staff members downtown, so we're able to answer questions quickly, and then also, a, a centralized number for support as well. I'm going to sneak out, and then I'm going to pull up and try to share. So, for anyone who, who's ever seen the online registration process, this is what the registration portal looks like. And so, uh, in here, what I've done is I've just entered a, a fictitious student. And I've entered actually a couple of students. You can see here, I have, uh, my son Forrest Gump and Forrest Gump Jr., and they are, um, currently registered or enrolled for next year. And so, you see one here with a check that's complete. I went through that entire process with this one. Uh, what's really nice is if parents begin the registration process and sign out at any time, when they come back, all of their information is saved, and they're in the exact same spot they were before. You can see they have the ability to change their contact information if they need to update address. They have the ability to add these emergency contacts, and these emergency contacts can be copied across all students that they're associated with in the household. Here's the updated medical history form, and so, parents can now, uh, give a more complete medical history. And again, nurses will have access to this medical history on the student account the second the online registration is complete. Uh, we can also, again, put notifications, so if food allergies is on the list for the nurses, every time a parent selects food allergy, the nurses will receive a notification, and then they can, they can follow up with the parents to ensure all the proper guidelines are in place. The big ones, the forms. Again, when one set of forms is completed, the information will actually update for all the household forms for your other students. Parents no longer have to go in, the fields will already be populated, and they just submit for their additional students, and it will run the process much smoother. Uh, this way, the parents aren't duplicating that effort, and that's probably been one of the most frustrating areas. And then, uh, the big piece is the uploading of files. Um, here, parents will be able to go in. Uh, what's really neat about this is our campus admin teams, our campus team specialists, as well as the administrative assistants have access to view this information, so they can verify the, um, the, the files that are loaded to ensure that the parent or the students have all the necessary documentation. And so, if they just choose the type of documentation, and if they have it in some electronic format, they can add the attachment, and then we'll be able to view those from the campus level. So, it's going to be a great platform. It's going to prevent, um, as much as the face-to-face interaction during this time of, of COVID-19 and CDC guidelines, and it's also going to give us more accurate information for our enrollment process and, and a more user-friendly process for our parents.
I want to say thank you to Patrick for, um, getting this done. I heard about this a lot, um, that there was a frustration of having to complete multiple forms, and, um, I think we had just general frustration, not only just here and there, but also from some of our campus administrative staff, and so, this is, um, this is huge, and thank, thanks to Patrick for doing that.
Very welcome.
Patrick, will, uh, I, is, is the information retained?
Yes, sir.
I haven't heard all this year, and I've got, okay. I can't tell you how tremendous a source of grief this has been in my household for 16 years now. I, we would have had two or three more kids if it wasn't so hard to register them in WISD school.
I don't know.
I, I, I want to be happy, but I'm, I've only got one kid left, and he's in there for one year, and this doesn't do that much for me, but really, all I can tell you is this is just long overdue. I don't know what has kept us from this. I'm not, Jerry Allen just showed up tonight. Was this his doing?
No, this is all Patrick. And it might have been you. I think you might have bent my ear back a little bit too, Mr. Dupree.
I probably did, or it was just, well, of course, last year, we got to register online, and then when we showed up to campus, they wanted us to fill out all the forms again in person.
I think, I think...
I think that request was refused. In fact, I know it was. Um, was it just a matter of buying the right piece of software?
It was just, um...
Or did this piece of software just now become available?
No, it was just a matter of implementing, um, the, the type of...
Well, they stopped. I'm just glad, I'm glad, it's all I need to know. I'm, I'm glad it's done. Good for you.
That's fantastic. I want to thank you too, because we have had similar frustrations through the years, and so, just hearing that it's going to be a smoother process and hopefully not duplicated at the campus level.
How many kids would you and Roger have had?
Huh?
How many kids would you and Roger have had?
I mean, you know, seven, eight.
Okay. Well, it wasn't as big a deal as it was to us then.
This is all Patrick, and, uh, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you all so much.
Absolutely worked through it and used the tools that we had.
Quick question. Mr. Upmore, do you have, as part of the ongoing, uh, forward look, is there a process in place to receive feedback to make future upgrades or enhancements?
We, we've already been looking. We have a couple of pieces we're not implementing, um, in this first go-round, because we updated so many of the pieces, and so, we do plan on receiving feedback from our parents throughout this registration process, and we'll put that process in place, because, again, we don't want frustration. It should not be difficult to get your kids registered for school. We want them here. It's, it's a partnership.
Good. That will be an important piece, I think, going forward. We want to keep Kerry happy, so...
All right, it's too late. Okay, one other thing, Patrick. Uh, the, on the, the medical records, I guess, and this would be an added complication, but I can imagine how software could do this. I, I forget when you get all your inoculations, but we, in the past, we keep having to re-enter that. I understand it can retain the information, but I guess, is there several, is there seventh grade and other round of vaccines we're looking for, or, and will it somehow automatically I, and I'm, obviously, I'm not the one that does it, so...
Um, because the, um, the documentation is kept in our system, and now with this going to digital, those immune records will be retained in a digital format as well from year to year, moving through. We don't have the actual immunizations in our database, so I don't know if we have any automatic, um, triggers for the parents where they only have to submit the immunization records at certain grade levels. But I will work with Ms. Settles. I've been working with her closely on this, on the medical side, because the immunization records have always been a big, um, a big sticking point as well.
Yeah, okay. I just, that'd be nice also, but this is a great step. Thank, thanks again.
I have one question, uh, Mr. Upmore. Uh, it seems fairly obvious, but this is, uh, information that teachers, administrators can access also, so say a teacher needs the phone number from, from a parent, they're able to kind of easily log on and kind of see this information also.
Correct. And with, with providing parents more opportunities to control their changes in address, control those changes in phone numbers, we're hoping that also, this, uh, with everybody doing online registration, they get Parent Portal, where they can access student grades, attendance, um, and all that communication. This opens it all up.
Wonderful. Thanks so much.
We'd be able to keep our, our information more up to date if parents can go online and update it. Um, and I know, you know, if that, if that information is updated in the system and you're not at the office, and something's going on with a student, that you should be able to pull it up very quickly and have access to parent contact. So, um, this is definitely something we needed to get done.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Dina, you're next. And look, you just popped up on my screen.
How about that?
Yeah. Uh, let's see, review, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the, uh, request for proposals for Literacy Professional Development Plan.
Correct. Can you see my screen?
I can.
Okay. All right. So, um, we, um, conducted, um, the Request for Proposal process, um, for our three-year Literacy Plan, and so, we've received those bids, and, um, as, as you can see, we're wanting to focus, I'm on the vendor of Warren Instructional Network, and I'll tell you a little bit more about them as I go through this, um, this presentation. Um, what we were really looking for in a proposal, proposal was, um, someone who could really meet the needs of the type of training that we need, um, in the district for this. So, looking at an overview of our training, um, Professional Development Plan for, um, Literacy across the district, that is going to begin with our curriculum writing, as you know, that we have, um, talked about a lot, and so, um, that actually begins next week. Um, we will have, uh, small groups, socially distanced in the boardroom. Originally, those would have included teachers, but because of our situation, it will just, um, include our coordinators, um, and in-house folks, and so, um, then we'll present that to teachers for feedback. Then, the second part of that plan is focusing on Tier One instruction and lesson design. So, all teachers across all, um, grade levels and campuses will attend a two-day virtual lesson planning training over the summer with Mrs. White, where they will focus on, um, really breaking down standards in the backwards design process, um, and aligning our objectives and our formative assessment to that lesson design piece. And then, that leads us to the Literacy Plan that we have in place, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, um, on the next slide, but that will really begin with a focus in the K through five area, and then add-on each year after that. And then, of course, um, you guys are already familiar with action coaching and data-driven instruction, and those two items support the work being done, um, in the, in the classroom. So, action coaching, um, will further develop our leaders to be able to go into the classroom and provide meaningful feedback to our teachers to help move them along, whether that means that, you know, they're already awesome and doing fabulous things, and, and we're just stretching their thinking, or for those teachers who may need some additional support. And then, data-driven instruction, um, will be used as it is now. We just barely were getting our toes wet. We had implemented it, and we were starting, um, in our cycles with our data meetings, and then, of course, um, we closed. But that's really responding to our unit assessments that will also be, new unit assessments now will actually be created through the curriculum writing process, so that we can be really responsive to our data, um, so that we're adjusting along the way. be really responsive to our data, so that we're adjusting along the way, and then hopefully, as you see, then that will lead us to hitting our targets for 2020, 21. So our professional development plan includes these things. So K through 12, all content areas will focus on lesson planning, as I said, looking heavily at alignment and objectives to those formative assessments. And when we say formative assessments there, that those are really the activities that the teachers are creating in the classroom and putting in front of students so that they can apply their knowledge. So making sure we're really aligned there. And then, of course, the K through five literacy piece that I spoke of. And then the big focus for middle and high school this year will be that tier-one alignment piece and planning. So the literacy piece that we're focusing on is what you might be familiar with or have heard called balanced literacy, which that is still a term, but there's a new term that we're using, which is called responsive instruction. Because when teachers learn how to teach this way at a deep level, it really is responsive to all of the student needs. And so we're making adjustments and really meeting students where they are and moving them along. So the first piece of that is our reading workshop. Of course, you'll see on the right, and the things involved in that are our mini lesson, managed independent learning, you see the grade levels that apply there, independent reading, guided reading, literature study, and then the share time. And so rather than, sometimes when people go into this type of professional development, they try to focus on too much too fast, and that is what we do not want to do. And so we're really going to slow it down and go very deep into these things, and that's why it is a three-year plan. And then there's writing workshop, of course, and you see the components of writing workshop on the right there. And so each teacher will engage in certain parts of this training over the course of three years. And then word study. Word study is a very large part of the training this year because of the phonics adoption that was required by House Bill 3. So I would say adoption, it's not really an adoption, it was a requirement rather than an adoption that would be like a textbook adoption. So we're using our early childhood allotment to focus on, on our phonics program. We are going to go ahead and incorporate the Fountains and Penel phonics system. It's only required to incorporate phonics at the K through three level as a part of that, but we are going to go ahead and focus on that K five. We know that we have a lot of struggling readers, and so we're going to go ahead and carry that all the way through the elementary piece. And so when we put all of these pieces together and our, our teachers are really understanding how to design that strong instruction, that leads to our responsive teaching. And as, as you see, that first bullet says, "Teachers design lessons that provide daily opportunities for students to think, talk, read, and write across the literacy framework." And the whole group, of course, lessons are explicit and provide links between reading and writing. And that's really important because the way the new ELA standards are laid out, there is that reciprocity between the reading and writing process. And if you were a teacher who taught using the balanced literacy framework, you may have always been doing that, but now it's very intentional in our standards. And we know that as the writing test changes, that's going to become even more important because our students are going to move to writing about their reading. And then teachers have daily opportunities to monitor student achievement and provide immediate response through small group and individualized instruction. So what we're looking at for this proposal over the next three years are three phases. And so phase one, hold on, I have to move the thumbnail of, Angela, you're on my screen there. Three years and so three phases. So the first year, like I said, we're focused on the elementary level. So the, the week we come back in August, our training will focus on the overall literacy framework. So what do our classrooms need to be successful? How do they need to be arranged? How do they need to be set up? And so a little bit of this will be set up in the classrooms before teachers even know, perhaps, exactly what the places are in peace for. But as they learn them, then they'll start to learn how to implement them. They'll receive phonics instruction over that new resource. And actually, since this presentation has been made, which was just last week, we tweaked that a little, and so the phonics instruction day is actually going to be a full day now. We're going to start out with a deep focus on mini lessons, and this is an, an area that, that seems like, well, a mini lesson is just a mini lesson. That's easy, it's your objective, but it's really not when you're tying that mini lesson across the literacy framework. And that will focus nicely with the lesson planning focus that we're, we're also incorporating this summer, so that it'll, it will seem for teachers kind of seamless, so that it doesn't feel like they're doing a bunch of different things. We're also going to focus on our coordinators, our instructional specialists, and our coaches, and really developing their capacity, capacity to be larger assets to our campus teachers. So they're going to be involved in a literacy intervention TOT where they're linking the LLI benchmark component for intervention, learning how to help our teachers incorporate that more fully to make a difference for students through intervention. We've also been using the benchmark assessment system, which is one of the assessment tools we use to find the, the level a student is reading, how they're comprehending and fluency, but it's a one-on-one piece with the teacher. There's a lot that we can learn from that when we're implementing that correctly. So there'll also be a focus there, so then those coaches can also help our campus teachers with that. And then focusing on how to help those instructional specialists coach our teachers and, and develop that, because when we, we come to professional development and we sit, we receive some instruction, and then we go back, really where we're going to see the growth is in that implementation support and the conversations that happen after that. And so we're going to be really working with them so that they are going into the classrooms and coaching teachers around the things that they're learning during the training. And then, as you know, when we shared our instructional calendar, we put several days on that calendar for professional development. And, you know, I would love to keep all of the days to myself if I could, but I know that's not fair. So we're sharing those, of course, with some of the things we're doing in Student Services. So we'll have a day in September, and then we will have another day in January. And so we will, you know, further that professional development and that focus each time on those areas that I showed you on the slides before. And then we are, each teacher will also receive seven days of coaching on campus from the consultants who are helping us with the training. And then they'll also provide ongoing support and collaboration in between. So that's phase one. Phase two, we will continue the K through five piece, getting deeper into some of the components and adding on. And then middle school literacy will be a focus that next year in the 2021, 22 school year. And then in the third year, continue adding on and going deeper with those from year one and year two, and then adding in the high school. And then, of course, as we have new hires, they will be brought in in phase one, not just expected to, to jump in where everybody else is. So that is the literacy plan as it is right now and the big year-one focus for that. So if we go back and think about that request for proposals and why we chose Warren Instructional Network, they not only have the capacity to meet our needs, but they are customizing what they're doing to really meet our needs. One of the vendors was, well, just didn't meet the requirements at all, and the other was Heinemann. Heinemann has great products, and actually, Warren Instructional Network, all of these consultants are trainers that are trained by Heinemann. However, they have their own consulting firm, and they customize a little bit more than what we would be able to get from Heinemann. And so before I ask for your approval, do you have any questions about this that anyone would like to ask? Nope?
No.
Okay, well, we are recommending that the board approve Warren Instructional Network for instruction, as the instructional support provider for our literacy training as presented.
Okay. Unless anybody has a question or?
I would just offer up that I'm never one to spend more money than less, but I think this is one of our more vexing issues, and if we can solve it for an additional $126,000, that is absolutely money well spent. And in the same breath, I, you know, obviously relying on your professional expertise, that's really what you need to do the job, so.
I agree, and I love the Heinemann product. What they were offering, though, they have seminars built around these components, and each seminar is a certain number of hours and a certain number of days. And those, the hours and days alone, really were not workable for, you know, the, the way that we have our professional development arranged here. And so it just, even though they were a bit less, it just didn't quite meet the needs that we wanted, you know, that we needed. And that was out without, actually, without the coaching involved, so.
This is a key component of the instructional work that we're doing to build capacity in our teachers. And so if you were to go back to that slide where Dina shows those five, I believe, five pieces, we were able to start DDI this year, that data-driven instruction, and we were able to begin action coaching. And there it is. And she did a little bit of work around lesson design, she's going to pick up STEAM on that this fall, or this summer, excuse me, and then building our customized curriculum is another, another piece. So all these pieces work together. It's really deep work, and it, it, it will build capacity over time in your teaching staff. So I'm really pleased that this brought this forward and happy to recommend this to you this evening.
Okay, anybody else have a question? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept administration's recommendation and.
Second?
Our Warren Instructional Network for our literacy training.
And was that your second, Robin? Or Stephanie?
Stephanie.
Stephanie, my screen. If, if, Dina, if, if you could stop shaving, saving your screen a minute, then I think I can pull screen back. Thank you. Ah, yeah, I can see everybody. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to accept the recommendation as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Not hearing them, that passes unanimously.
Dina, one other thing, I guess, a year from now, I always, I'm always curious as to see how these things work out, maybe an, an objective assessment of how you feel things have gone with them, and if that need, if we need to stay the course or try something else.
And that is a good point, because we are not locked into them for three years. So this is year one of three, and so if it, you know, if something were to happen, we definitely could reconsider.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. King Cannon.
Okay, I think I have the last item this evening, and it's one familiar with, and hopefully we will, we'll get it some, make a decision on this this evening. So we've been visiting about the vision, mission, and goals for WACO ISD, and as you can see on the memo, the board, the last mission statement is there. I think I heard consensus around the mission of WACO ISD is to provide an educational foundation that empowers and values all. And I think that captures beautifully what we want to do to, to respect the equity and inclusion and value of all our kids. The vision, we've, we've come up with three different options there, all, I think saying pretty much the same thing, so would love to hear from you all if you have settled on an option to select this evening. And then there are the 10 goals that I presented last time that were included in the 2019, 2020 district improvement plan, and my recommendation was that we carry those forward. And I will be revising the district improvement plan to update and add things and delete things that we've been able to accomplish thus far that are in there. So that work will carry forward. There's some things that we, might get as far as we wanted to with the pandemic, but we've made some really nice ones this year. So I will pass it to you, President Teakell.
Okay, we have, well, let's see, it may be the third time we've looked at deep. We talked about it last week. And I, I'm, I'm open. Comments? I will say on behalf, before we, I open up to you guys that are here, I did talk to Mr. Manning, and he shared his preference for number three of the three. Because I had, some of you, I had, when I, I talked to you guys about looking at this again before we got together, and he did his homework, and he relayed when he realized he wasn't going to be here tonight, that he liked number three, so.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Dr. King Cannon, I know that from the discussions that we've had recently on the items that you're presenting tonight, and I think you've indicated, not only through comments on those reviews, but also, as you've indicated tonight, that you've had some good dialogue with campus and district administrators regarding the formulation and the development of our mission and vision, which, which I think is very appropriate, very meaningful to us as we move forward, to gather that input and take time to reflect on that input. You know, as a board, we typically do a lot of this planning, if you will, to develop mission and vision through, you know, team-building processes. But I'm especially glad that you've been able to draw your team together to address these issues. So with that being said, I'm curious as to what, you know, kind of bubbles up through your, your discussions with campus and district administrators as far as, you know, perhaps even going so far as, do you have an option that you would recommend for us to consider most, in most detail, I guess?
Okay, well, I'll speak to that a little bit. Going back to the process that we used, we had a lot of conversation about essential intent and what we wanted for ourselves and for our district. And I think, you know, what's important for our mission and vision statement is that it's, it's, it's that we pull every, pull the team together. So what I heard from our staff was that they have appreciated the professional development that has been provided so far, some of the DDI work that Dina's done, and action coaching for, with Ms. White, the design thinking, and the word grow is the word that came up over and over, and I think cultivate means the same thing essentially. So I, you know, I, I lean to option two, because I like that word grow, and I heard it so many times with the staff. But to tell you the truth, I like all of them. I can live with any of them. I, I really wanted the board to weigh in on this decision, and they, to me, they all say pretty much the same thing, and really, I think grow just flows off the tongue a little easier than cultivate for me. Am I any help to you there?
Sure, absolutely. I'm going to go ahead on, on that basis, Dr. King Cannon and Madam President, I'm going to move that we adopt the mission statement as presented and discussed previously, and option two for the vision statement, as well as the board goals that are presented in our package.
Okay, thank you. Anybody want to second the motion?
I'm like something in there about making it easy to register students in case we black slide on that. I'm like something in there about making it easy to register students, in case we backslide on that. I regret not having done that a long time ago. I tell you what, if you backslide, we'll bring it up next year. I'll demand.
I just don't even know what to say.
I'm not sure, I'm confused. Was that a second?
I don't think so.
Other than that, I normally vote with Norman, except when he's obviously wrong. A little bit torn about what to do here. He should have showed up for the meeting. Okay. I'll second Alan's motion that we adopt option two.
Hey, anybody want to talk about it some more? Mr. Vedanya, Ms. Houston, Ms. Cordawig.
I think number two is the one that I was supporting last week, so I'm fine with that recommendation.
New flip-flopping.
No.
I know, oh, gosh, I I've flip-flopped. I go back and forth. I think I liked two and three. I can't remember what I said.
They're all great.
Two looks great. Mr. Vedanya?
I have two's, two's fine with me.
Yeah? Well, okay, then I think we're right, that kind of was a vote. But we'll make it official.
We call.
I'll call vote. All those in favor of option two, say aye.
Right.
Aye. Unopposed?
Well, it was the motion, though, not just option two.
Up.
Right.
Yep.
The motion as pres, okay. I I hope Christie gets that.
The motion, the motion to approve the vision and goals.
Of all of it, okay. Including option two, or specifying option two in the vision. Okay, got it.
Right.
I just want to thank you, Susan, for doing so much work for us, getting the team to really focus on what these two terms mean, recognizing that it's been a long time. I don't know that, if you asked me, I would have been able to tell you certainly not what a vision was and how important it is to the work. And I think you can all agree, we're growing, we're growing together, so I appreciate.
Thank you.
That on that.
Appreciate that. I think, you know, it's important to be focused around the same mission. And so if we can get the team all doing the same work and growing in the same direction, we can continue to make progress.
Agreed. Okay, announcements, I'm not sure who's in charge of that tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of items that we want to highlight tonight. The first is after 38 years with Waco ISD, Debbie Sims is retiring. And that is going to be a dramatic change for Providence Heights Elementary, where she has been the principal since 2012, and of course, led to other campuses before that. When you go into that school, you just feel the incredible culture that she's built there, so we will miss her, but certainly wish her well. And the other thing that I wanted to touch on tonight was that on May 14th, the Waco ISD Education Foundation held their annual surprise patrol in a very different virtual setting, and we're able to award $125,373 in grants to teachers to do innovative projects this coming school year for their students, and it really helps to give teachers the opportunity to expand how they engage their kids and try new things and new ways. But the other piece of the story that I think is so cool is that the foundation would typically fund a lot of these grants with their annual celebrity cook-off event, which was scheduled for March 27th, and of course, canceled in the wake of the global pandemic. But the sponsors, the other donors that would typically support the event, almost without exception, still stepped forward, made the same contributions, and made it possible to bring these grants to our teachers two weeks ago, and in the near future, to offer some incredible scholarships to our seniors, and the foundation will be announcing those soon as well. So some some really great stories, went a little bittersweet, but that we wanted to share with the board before we conclude this evening.
That's amazing. Is there anything else before we adjourn? Okay, let's see, it's 7:20. Wow. Thanks, everybody. That's it.
We'll be a little longer next time, June 11th.
Okay.
Remember that we were early this time. How's that? Yeah. Thank y'all.
Good night, and I. Thank you.